Good morning and welcome to the public hearing and public meeting for the Landmarks Preservation Commission today, August 5. The right date, right? Today, we are, we're going to begin by taking attendance as we always do, but before we do, I just wanted to announce that with the retirement of our vice chair, the mayor has appointed Commissioner Angie Master to be LPC's new vice chair, and we're delighted to have her take on that role and thank her for accepting and being so gracious about agreeing to be the vice chair and looking forward to your work in that role. And so with that, I will turn it over to General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the role.
Chair Carroll?
Here.
Vice Chair Master?
Here.
Mr. Chen? Mr. Chu?
Here.
Commissioner Ginferd? Commissioner Goldblum?
Here.
Commissioner Ekembe? Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Mahan?
Here.
Commissioner Wilder?
All right, good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting. We are going to begin this morning with a public meeting agenda for applications that have already had a public hearing and are back today with changes to their proposal. And then we are going to move to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. This meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings remotely. And with that, I will turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Harala.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's preservation department agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC 25-05359, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 77, Lot 50, 2120 45th Avenue in the Hunter's Point Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by Spencer Root and John Rust and built in 1872, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition. This was last presented at the public hearing of February 25, 2025, and no action was taken at that time. The applicant is here to present revisions to the proposal in response to your comments after we open the proceedings.
All right, and we'll do that now so that that can happen seamlessly. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Vice Chair Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, the applicant may begin.
This is the name. This is a follow-up. Even with comments that were addressed from the last hearing, fifth was we reduce the volume of the rear. We came out technically, and that's been aligned. Third floor will have to be reconstructed, and we will use the bricks that are salvaged from the rear demolition. Days ago, oh, as per comments a couple of days ago, we will leave the... That submission was moved. Questions?
The previous proposal and the revised proposal?
Stay the same except for the volume and height of the... So from this revision, on the bottom is the proposed, the top was that elevation or the rear elevation that was previously submitted, which shows that the ground floor was about 20 feet out. That's... Second floor was 10 feet. On the last comments, what we did was, we made the third floor, we're reconstructing the third floor using the bricks. The second, first, and the basement will line up with the 10-foot rear extension.
And can you just go to the block plan again at the beginning of the presentation? All right, Commissioners, are there any questions? So when we last, just to summarize this, when we saw this last time, this was a proposal for a three-story rear yard addition and then reconstructing the top floor. And, and you can see in the block plan, yep. And so it was deeper than the immediate neighbors, partly in part because the building came out deeper. And so at that hearing, I think we asked for more documentation about the condition and the need to reconstruct the top floor. And I think kind of the consensus of the Commissioners present was to ask the applicant to either lower it by one floor and keep it at that depth, or to keep it at the three stories and pull it back to be in line with the neighbor. And so the applicant has taken that direction and has pulled it back to align with the neighbor, and I believe submitted documentation for the reconstruction of the upper floor to resolve the issues that staff is comfortable with. So are there any questions on this one? Okay, I think it's fairly straightforward. And I think we did receive a letter from the Historic Districts Council, which has always was shared in advance of today's hearing. All right, so Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the applicant has responded to our comment last time, and I can find it appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Mann?
I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Wilder?
It's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Agreed, appropriate.
Does anyone else have any other thoughts? Okay, so I think we can make a motion to approve this. Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion? Oh, okay, here. Actually, I have it. You're not going to get away that easy.
Along with my glasses. In a matter of LPC 25-05359, 2120 45th Avenue, Hunter's Point Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. Noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Hunter's Point Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed addition will not rise to the full height of the building, and the top floor, and the top floor will be retained, thereby maintaining a sense of that building's original scale and massing, that the proposed addition will not project further into the rear yard than other additions on the block, and will substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard or disrupt the continuity of central green space, that the design and materiality of the addition, featuring white finish tuckled cladding, black finish window and door assemblies in punch windows, and black finish metal railings, will be, will harmonized with the materials and fenestration pattern of the rear facade of the building, that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the Hunter's Point Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Mahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
With eight, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ekembe?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and thank you, Lacy.
Thank you, Lacy, and we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public meeting item number two, LPC 25-00834, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 634, Lot 58, 94 Bank Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1838 to 39, and the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, replace windows, excavate the rear yard, and legalize painting the facade without a permit. This was last presented at the public hearing of July 8, 2025. No action was taken at that time. The applicants will present revisions to the proposal in response to your comments after we open the proceedings.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, the applicant may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Sher from Higgins Quaysbarthen Partners. We are the historic preservation consultants on this project. I'm joined by Alexander Blakely and Socorro Fernandez from AB Architecton, the architects on the project, who will be available to answer any questions, as well as my colleague, Esther Wagner. So 94 Bank Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, the last time we presented to you, in general, the Commissioners were supportive of keeping the facade painted pink and having one-over-one windows at the front facade, but had some comments on the rooftop and rear yard addition, in particular, the alignments were causing a little bit of incongruity between the building and the additions, and there was some concern about sort of the complexity of visibility of seeing some of the penthouse as well as a mechanical enclosure above. So we're here to address those concerns. So as you may recall, 94 Bank Street, located on the south side of Bank Street between Hudson and Greenwich, this angle of how Greenwich intersects with Bank creates this sort of wide corner, which allows for oblique views over 94 Bank from the north. You may recall the rear yard condition, so this is a photo taken from the roof of 94 Bank, looking down, this is our rear yard. To the west is 96 Bank, which was part of the original row. These were all constructed in 1839, all were bought independently and raised up in the 1880s and sort of Italianatized, Italianated. Before designation, 96 Bank, our neighbor to the west, had a full-height rear yard addition added, and the, the way the block is constructed, there is this large addition along Greenwich Street that cuts off 94 Bank from the rest of the rear donut. So the previous proposal, this is an image with the existing condition on the left and the previous proposed on the right. As you can see, we were aligning not with the facade but with the property line, which created maybe more of a bulkier presence than was intended. It's quite a modest addition. So we've just straightened out that line, pulled in the corner along the west, and at the rooftop, the mechanical enclosure has been reduced, so just showing you that again before, after. And by pulling the mechanical enclosure to the east, this brings it out of the line of sight from Greenwich Street. And then from the back, so again, the, the basement level was proposed to, to come out to the rear line, rear lot line, given that there's no continuity of the donut because of this large addition along Greenwich Street, and then a two-story addition above that. Again, that, that sort of angled line, Commissioners had an issue with, and then also the, the top floor, which was being, which is being maintained, didn't have the corbeling that 92 Bank to the east has. So there was a request to recreate that, to sort of create more distinction at the historic top floor. So here is the proposal. So again, going, pulling in one of those corners to align with the house itself, and then recreating the missing brick corbeling at the top, and then also showing the segmental arches at the top floor being maintained. And also in this view, you can see the straightening out to align with the house at the penthouse addition and the decrease in footprint at the mechanical enclosure. So just previously proposed, currently proposed elevation-wise, all we've seen changed in elevation is the shrinking of the mechanical enclosure footprint. And then at the back, again, we see that, that shrinking of the mechanical enclosure, and then we also see the recreation of the corbeling at the top floor. In plan, we can see again, so how this edge gets pulled out to align this with the house, the mechanical enclosure previously proposed on top, currently proposed on the bottom, shrinks to the east and also set back farther, and then the straightening out to align with the house at the penthouse front facade. And then in renderings, previously proposed, currently proposed, again, the Commissioners were generally fine with the pink facade and the one-over-one windows. And then the mockup was rebuilt to reflect the revised visibility. This is the previous mockup. So we had circled where things were visible in the yellow dotted circles, so this at the right top corner goes away, so just focusing on these two at the bottom, the revised mockup, shows the elimination of visibility of the mechanical enclosure from this angle. And then just a reminder of relevant landmarks approvals precedents, where there's this unusual visibility portal, which is created by Greenwich and Banks intersection, so 105, 107 Bank Street is the most comparable because it's the, the same sort of intersection, just one block to the west of us. 44 Horatio Street is over a playground, and then 65 Horatio also has one of those odd corners, and then also has an exposed side elevation. So here's the previous rendering. We had the penthouse and then the visible mechanical enclosure, and then the revision to sort of simplify that penthouse, but still have it in line with the amount of visibility we typically see for these unusual sightings of landmark buildings. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions on this one? All right, I don't think so. Okay, so we can move to our discussion, and I'll just, let me see. And yeah, we did receive letters from Village Preservation and Historic Districts Council also shared in advance of today's hearing. And so as Sarah pointed out, when we originally saw this application, I think the Commissioners were pretty much in agreement in their comments, and I think everybody felt that in this particular context, in this particular house, and the support from the neighbors and the longstanding pink type of color on this house, everyone was comfortable with retaining the pink and, and supporting the one-over-one double-hung windows, given the sort of transitional nature of this building and the block. And our comments really focused on the rear, and I think at the top floor, everybody wanted to see the corbelled cornice restored, and, and then with the additions, both additions, I think everybody felt that having them at these angles was very unresolved, and that they asked, we asked that the applicant straighten it out to be parallel to the house, to have a more logical relationship to the house, and so they have presented those revised proposals. We also asked them to remove the, or re-shift or relocate the mechanical equipment to make it less visible. So they have addressed that as well in terms of both visibility and size. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure. As you, as you've just stated, Sarah, the, the issues, at least that I had, were, were not the aesthetic or the finishes of, of the new addition pieces, but the general massing. And the applicant has really responded to all the comments we've given, and I see this as a great improvement. I think this is totally appropriate.
Commissioner Ekembe?
I am in alignment. I appreciate the rigor and also the attention to the comments that were given, and I believe it's appropriate.
Vice Chair Master?
Yeah, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum? Everybody agree? All right, no other comments? Okay, so I think we're in agreement. Commissioner Chu, would you make that motion?
Can I borrow that hard copy?
Thank you, Janet.
Okay, in the case of LPC 25-00834, 94 Bank Street, Greenwich Village Historic District, a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1838 to 39, application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, replace windows, excavate the rear yard, and legalize painting of facade without a permit. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I further note that the black and white photos indicate that the facade was painted in 1940's tax photos and at the time of designation, but in an indeterminate color. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed one-over-one double-hung wood windows will be consistent with the later-period alterations at this building and the conditions seen in historic tax photo. At the pink paint finish at the previously painted front facade will be in keeping with the variety of colors found on buildings in this historic district, including many that were painted along with other stylistic changes in the early 20th century, and will not detract from the building or the streetscape, that the presence of the partially-visible rooftop addition, featuring zinc cladding and metal and glass windows and doors and metal-clad bulkhead, mechanical screening and flues will be in keeping with the typical utilitarian rooftop additions and accretions found in this historic district, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the rear yard addition will not extend to the top floor, and the rooftop addition will be set back well from the front facade and modestly from the rear facade, maintaining a sense of the building's original volume, that the irregular form of the rear addition responding to the angled rear facade and property lines will not detract from the building or the neighboring buildings, will have a cluster of addition, which have a cluster of additions, including a modern full-height addition at the addition, at the adjacent building, and will not diminish a significant central green space, that the proposed red brick cladding and multi-light metal window and door assemblies at the proposed rear yard addition will be in keeping with the materials and articulation of the other rear yard additions found throughout the historic district, that the top floor of the rear facade has been previously altered with thick coatings on the masonry, and the replacement of the corbelled cornice with a flat parapet warranting its reconstruction with new brickwork opening with sills and lintels and corbelled cornice to match the historic condition, that the excavation below the building and in the rear yard will be done in compliance with the Department of Buildings regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer to protect the building and adjacent buildings, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Ekembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Ekembe?
Aye.
Mr. Mahan?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public meeting item number three, LPC 26-00667. This is an application for an amendment. It's in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 818, Lot 56, 8 to 10 West 17th Street in the Ladies' Mile Historic District. This is a vacant lot, formerly a mid-20th-century commercial building designed by Balfatto and Pavarini and built in 1961 to 63. This application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 24-07547 to construct a new building. The applicants will present the proposal after we open the proceedings.
Okay, we'll do that right now. Vice Chair Master, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, you may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Erin Rulie, Higgins Quaysbarthen Partners. I'm joined today by Jordan Rogoff of DXA Studio, and we're here to present design changes to the approved building at 8 and 10 West 17th Street. So as some of you might recall, this was an approval in November 2023 for the spectacular new building designed by DXA and the new 17-story residential building that's inspired by the Ladies' Mile history of the garment industry and, and retail development within the, the historic district. And we're here today to present a few changes. Since the, the time of the approval, there have been two significant changes to the project. First, the, the passage of City of Yes, which enables added zoning benefits for residential buildings, and in addition, the ownership of the development has changed hands. And so in looking at the plans, trying to consider how to improve and increase the amount of residential units within the, the proposed design, we went back to the drawing board and have found a way to accommodate additional units. All of these changes are at the rear and cellar of the, the building. There are no visible changes to the, this very distinctive design that the Commission approved. So it's all very exciting, the ability to incorporate City of Yes zoning changes while still maintaining the existing proposed facade and that the Commission was so happy to approve. So just to orient you, we're located on the south side of 17th Street between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue, of course, located in Ladies' Mile District. This is actually the second new building that was approved for the site. In 2014, a new building was proposed by buyer Blender Bell, and at that time, there was a three-story commercial building previously on the site, and the approval in 2014 called for the demolition, the approval of the demolition of that building, that part of the project was undertaken, but the, the design was never realized. And so the starting point for our project in 2023 is the vacant site that you see on the right. Realizing that many of you were not here for the original design presentation, Jordan's going to walk you through some of the design intent and the specific changes that are proposed. Again, they're all very modest and have no visible impact on the design.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jordan Rogoff, partner at DXA Studio. For the benefit of those that were not present in November of 2023, when we presented previously, wanted to give you kind of the backstory or the evolution of the, of the design of the building, starting back at the beginning of the, of the Ladies' Mile District. We did a lot of research, a really deep dive into the history of the district and found some surprises that, that informed the design process. So starting with the Ladies' Mile itself, at its peak, there were about 75,000 people employed in the store and loft mid-block buildings, manufacturing for the first time ready-to-wear clothing. And that, that grew the audience for the notion of fashion, because all of a sudden, people were able to afford a lot of different clothing. So this technological advance was met with a, with a major kind of paradigm shift in fashion itself, and that was this transition from the Edwardian and Victorian era of dress, where outfits tended to kind of disfigure the body with, with bustles and giant hats and, and all sorts of ornament. There was a proponent of what was the aesthetic movement that was happening in England and in Ireland, in Oscar Wilde, featured there in the upper right-hand corner. And the, the reform brought by the aesthetic movement was one to kind of restore the celebration of human form and to create clothing that was far more functional and comfortable than the clothing that was featured in the, the Victorian and Edwardian era. So the, the amazing correlation that we discovered in this investigation was that that reform movement sort of drifted into the world of architecture and informed Adolf Loos, Frank Lloyd Wright, Mies van der Rohe, Corbusier, all of these burgeoning architects kind of latched onto this idea of dispensing with ornament and, and, and really featuring function as the driving force with, with form, obviously, to, to follow. And now, taking these discoveries in the historical research and, and transitioning, transitioning them into the, the architecture, the design for the building, we looked to other sources of inspiration, notably on the left, Christo and Jean-Claude's installation at the Arc de Triomphe, this idea of, of draping the form of the Arc de Triomphe and removing all of the kind of symbolism and ornament that was featured on there, and, and looking with a fresh perspective at the Arc de Triomphe. Then looking also at the Renaissance masters as we try to search for a more robust material that could handle, you know, exterior conditions, and the, the mastery of stone and solid materials in the expression of, of fabric. And then notably, on the right, the kind of development, technological development of building materials that allow for that sort of expression. So that led us to developing a, what is a UHPC rain screen system, very high-performance building, that we're actually able to model and, and CNC routes, rigid insulation and poor concrete over that to get the, this effect of kind of this draped fabric. And so that allowed us to express the, the simplicity of, of that reform. And so that allowed us to express the simplicity of that reform movement with the aesthetic movement in dress and actually simultaneously kind of synthesize a number of things, this expression of fabric, the transition from the commercial palace building, which featured one of the many department stores that dotted the landscape of the Ladies' Mile, transition that down to the store and loft building with this dormer, and then celebrate the fanciful tops of buildings that you see, the kind of whimsical tops of buildings throughout the Ladies' Mile District. To the bottom of the building, then, we kind of honored the tripartite arrangement of a lot of the buildings in the district by kind of pulling back this fabric and exposing a storefront or base of the building composed of metal paneling, similar to the cast iron architecture that was prevalent at the base of a number of these buildings. And then just in context, seeing that we tried to align with the datums between these buildings and expose that kind of commercial composition at the bottom with the more residential up above. So, and then this is the material palette showing that UHPC on the left and on the right there, and then all of the secondary elevations, including the rear elevation, side elevations in a masonry. So what we're here today to present to you is, as Erin mentioned, the City of Yes by reducing the required rear yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet, that gave us kind of a fungibility or an ability to push the back of the building out below an elevation of 75 feet. Notably, behind us on West 16th Street, we have buildings that are about five stories tall, so everything that we're proposing here is not visible from the public right away, which will show momentarily. But that additional, we chose to project about eight and a half feet, which allows us to actually add an additional units on floors two through seven, so that's six additional units. And then at the top of the building, we took what was a duplex unit and made it stacked simplex units. So there's one change regarding that, which is, in this area, we formally did not have a balcony when we were here in November of '23. We're asking to add a balcony there to provide outdoor space for a newly created unit. Down below that 75-foot mark where we're pushing out, we're essentially adding another punched opening with a partition wall separating two units in the back. And again, all of these changes are not visible from the public right of way. Here are a number of studies showing that public right of way with the additional balcony present up here. And then some of the parameters of visibility, starting obliquely at the 12-story and then the 15-story directly across the street. And then finally, I just wanted to point out that in projecting back, it's important to understand the context that almost all of these buildings are really deep buildings that go almost all the way to the property line or close, so it's not a donut situation that we're detracting from with this proposal. And that is it. That's it. Oh, I'm sorry. I did, yes. Thank you, Erin. I did forget to mention that we are proposing to drop the cellar down an additional two feet. We'll be working on staff with that, because we had previously gone through the enhanced engineering process upon the first approval.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for refreshing our memories and presenting the design to those commissioners who weren't here at the time, and I hope everybody found it interesting. Does anyone have any questions about the proposed modifications? Okay, and then I think we can start our discussion, and I think, you know, it was such an exciting, inspiring design. These changes that we're looking at at the back really don't have little to do with that design. They reflect the more sort of utilitarian secondary facades that you see over the shorter buildings on the street behind. And so it includes this additional balcony at the 15th floor, I think, and changing the fenestration and pushing out the rear wall to create a smaller rear yard, and the applicant showed the context with deep buildings all around it. So, any thoughts, Commissioner Wilder? Do you have any thoughts on these proposed modifications?
No, I think they're appropriate and taking advantage of the City of Yes without modifying the original approved building, so I think it's appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that increasing the volume, adding the new units, hasn't really affected the previously approved design proposal. As shown, the rear yard addition to the volume is not visible. The balcony doesn't incur any significant change to what's being seen from the street level, and I guess the exploration of the cellar drop of two feet is ongoing, and I don't see that as a major change to the proposal either, so I think this is appropriate. And thank you for the clear presentation of comparison for us.
Commissioner Quembe?
I'm in agreement with what was said, and I believe it's appropriate.
Vice Chair Master?
Yeah, I agree. These are small changes that really don't affect the front facade, and they're appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. It was a creative project, and I'm glad it's going forward.
Commissioner Chen?
Agree with the comment. Kudos to the applicant. Really, really interesting. I love the layering design on the base.
Commissioner Mann?
Yeah, agreed. Given the lack of visibility.
All right, great, thank you. And just, sort of to clarify process a little bit, this is an application for an amendment, and when the commission approves a design and the applicants come forward with proposed changes, the staff will look at those changes, and if they find that they're in keeping with the intent of the original approval, they can often be approved at staff level. And these changes are, while very modest and don't affect the design, and one could say are in keeping with the intent of the original approval, because it did increase the footprint. The project was brought before the full commission, and so that's why we're reviewing it today. But even with that additional depth, I think it fits completely within its context and is still in keeping with the original design. So I think we can go ahead and make a motion to approve. Commissioner Wilder, would you make that motion? Do you want that? Okay.
All rusty today.
LPC 26-00667, 8-10 West 17th Street, Ladies' Mile Historic District, a vacant lot, formerly a mid-20th century commercial building designed by Belfato and Pavarini and built in 1961-1963. Application to amend Certificate of Appropriateness 24-07547 to construct a new building. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed enlargement at the lower floors at the back of the commission-approved new building will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That the block, only a portion of which is located within the Ladies' Mile Historic District, features a variety of building types, sizes, and depths. Therefore, the extension of the building at the rear of the lot will not eliminate a continuous green space within this highly built-up block. That the rear extension at the lower floors will be modest in depth and will still provide for a substantial rear yard setback to allow for light and air. That the enlarged window openings and revised fenestration at the lower floors of the rear facade will maintain a pattern of punch window openings typical of secondary facades of buildings in the historic district, and that the proposed revisions will be in keeping with the intent of the original approval for this new building and will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies' Mile Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan?
Aye.
Or Wilder?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Look forward to seeing it built. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Meeting Item Number Four, LPC 24-08608. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1388, Lot 7503, 57 East 73rd Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a Queen Anne-style residence designed by John G. Prague and built in 1885 to 1886. The application is to construct a rooftop and rear yard addition. This was last presented at the public hearing of July 9th, 2024, and no action was taken at that time. The applicants will present revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
All right, we'll do that now. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to open the proceedings? Thank you. Commissioner Mann, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Good morning. My name is Lionel Brex. I am the owner of the penthouse, and I am just here just in case there are any questions to be addressed and to answer them directly.
And my name is Damiano Geraci. I'm the architect for the project, and as was noted, we were here slightly over a year ago and presented the project, and we got some feedback from the board, which we've taken to heart and integrated into the presentation. So I'm going to review quickly our location and then our modifications and explain what we've done to try to comply to the board's considerations. So is it the click button here? Yep. Okay, sorry. Okay, so our presentation is 5773rd, which is a series of row houses anchored on both ends of the block by much taller buildings. The building you see on the left is a hospital or residential for rent. You can see on this map our location within the historic district. On the Google Maps view of our area from the roof. And so the photographic area, again, showing how we're kind of located between these much taller buildings, and it's just a series of small houses that we have. And what we're presenting basically is, the larger green rectangle is the area of an existing penthouse, that we are basically, the penthouse roof at the moment slopes. We're going to propose to make our first area penthouse ceiling level and just go above the existing height of the penthouse by about six feet. So we're reducing the volume of the penthouse, we're recapturing it to get some useful space for ourselves. Excuse me. And the smaller green rectangle is a proposal to build over an existing extension that already sits on the property. So again, just some location shots of where we stand within the context of the Upper East Side. So there was some discussion last time as to why we were proposing to build out towards the back and add all the volume that way, and there was a question about why can't we go forward instead of towards the back only? And I wanted to present basically what's happening in the rear. There is existing equipment for air conditioning that, of course, could be moved, but the main issues that we have is the structure you see there in stucco, that's an elevator machine room, and that obviously has to be accessed by building consultants and also by the FDNY. So what we've shown is a path where if we're coming from the street for the FDNY, if starting from the left of the screen, we have to have a clear path of six feet for the FDNY to access that space. So even if we removed all the equipment and we added the clear path, and then we have our path from our penthouse, which is the door you see, put it in the back, I don't know if I can point to it, but right over there, that's the path that is from the penthouse that exists out to the rooftop. So even if we were to use that area and extend it out towards the back, by the time we have the access to the FDNY and our access to a space that we could use, and the limit line from the street for visibility of the center of the chimneys and any additions we have, we really could only build out a 10-foot by 6-foot wide space. So it really isn't ideal, and it doesn't gain anything, and it's potentially even visible from other portions that we wouldn't want it to be. So it's really not a viable space for us. And we tried it, we laid it out, we moved the door to the room, so right now, the door is on this side. We moved it so that we can reposition the landing, create a new access pathway, remove all of the equipment that's there and just use it for accessible space and required space, but it really doesn't work for us in this scenario. But we wanted to present it because it was requested, and we did think about it to begin with, we just hadn't explored it visually for anyone to see. So what we're presenting here is three side-by-side elevations. The one on the left are the existing conditions of the building as they are now. The one in the middle is what we presented last year, and the volume in blue is basically showing an extension over the existing balcony. So we were planning to enclose the balcony that exists for our client on the fourth floor and overhang and take over volume that extends out to the 30-foot rear yard line of the building. And just a note that last year when we presented, we actually got this area wrong, if that was a contention last year. This building next to us is actually not this low, it's correctly shown in this elevation and this elevation. It was incorrectly shown here, so in case that influenced anyone last year, we wanted to point that out. And now the presentation on the right is what we are presenting now. The dashed red line shows the volume and the area that we are reducing, and we're basically taking it back, and I'll show you that in section on the next slide, we're taking it back to the same plane as the existing building. And the area in green here is the area that's being built over the existing four-story addition that is here. So in section, again, we have our existing roofline, which is the dashed line that goes across the page, and we're only going up six feet from the roofline up to our new rooftop. We're doing it by basically taking away the volume that used to be a sloped roof and recapturing it, as I said. And before, we were overhanging the balconies, and that was an issue that the commission had a problem with. So we've stepped that back, we're just building out the volume that's shown in green here over the existing rooftop, and this other green is a volume that sits back on the extension that is here. So we're actually reducing our volume from what used to be 8,450 cubic feet to about 3,327 cubic feet, so 60% reduction in volume. And a comparison of the elevations in sections, so perhaps it's clearer. So again, we're basically reducing what used to be an overhang and an addition to just a simple wedge over the existing penthouse and a rectangle over the existing addition. In plan, again, the reduction in blue of what used to be an enclosed space back to being an existing balcony, the only modification we propose here is to open the door from the new kitchen onto the balcony and keep the existing doors as well from what used to be the kitchen to now dining room into the existing balcony, and so we have two paths of access. This is the existing penthouse level, so this is what we have right now, which is one small room balcony below. This is what we were proposing before with the extension of the main bedroom over the balconies, overhanging the building. And again, we set this back so that it's basically just the same room we had before. We're losing space by adding a stair, but we're adding space on this side for a bathroom and storage, et cetera. And this is now the second layer of the penthouse room, again, reducing from what used to be this large space to just this area here with an area with a bathroom and a secondary area, which could be office or bedroom, and the balcony below. So the reduction again is about 60% of volume and area from what we had. This is now our proposed recreational roof space, setting back again from what was proposed before. The red line shows a deletion here and deletion back here, and we're just going to have an area for recreation, green roof. And the access from this roof, aside from being on the interior from bulkhead we saw on the previous page there, there will also be access from the main roof up to this area in case of any issues or emergencies. So photographs of the existing context of the building. This is the penthouse that exists with the sloped roof. It sets out onto the rooftop, the existing extension, and we're seeing it from all sides here. This was the area of the balcony we were planning to enclose, which will now remain open. And you can see the shot down from the balcony all the way down to the yard below. Nothing will change. And a shot now of coming out of the penthouse door, looking south towards the equipment at the rooftop, which again, we proposed to remove, but even so, the pathways and requirements, it doesn't really gain us anything. A shot of the rear donut. All the red show existing buildings that have been added on to, so these are all extensions. And the blue shows existing rooftop structures that our neighboring buildings do have within the context of that donut. These are just a few selections of buildings across from us and on our side that do have extensions and rooftop penthouses. And most notably, across from us is 44 East 74th Street, which seems to have a full-floor extension above the main building and then a setback for a little penthouse above there as well. So they're, they actually have a two-story addition to their top. And these photos, we had built... A, I forgot the word for it. Thank you. We had built a mock-up last year, and we did a study. And this is a mock-up of the full original proposal so that we could see if we were to do that, if it would be seen from the street. And walking from Madison all the way across the street to, is that Madison? Sorry. From, yeah, Madison down to the next avenue, there is no point at which the rooftop position would have been seen. So from Madison all the way down to Park, we were clear on the front side of seeing any of the addition. So now that we reduced it, it's even less obvious to be seen. And we did create some renderings of our proposal. So again, we're showing, this is the addition over the existing addition. This is the penthouse that's been set back and keeps the balcony plain. This is looking from the backside where the existing mechanical room is, the elevator room, with our stair leading down to the rooftop and up to our balcony, to our terrace. And we proposed to keep the material similar so that there's no distinct, obvious intervention seen there. We're keeping the brick on the side that's brick. We're keeping the stucco as it is on this side. At the rear of the building, the existing brick has been painted and polished white. We're proposing to match that so that it just keeps the volume of the building obvious and simple. It doesn't look like something we've just lobbed down to the top of it. And this last slide is from Park Avenue, and it's basically showing a tiny little sliver of what would have been seen if the original addition were to have been built, and this was pushed out further over the balconies. So now that we're pushing it back, you probably won't see anything at all. So we just want to iterate that we were conscious of that. We minimized it at the point as much as possible, and now it's even more minimal than it was before. So we hope the commission considers that we reduced the volume quite extensively and that we are trying to conform to the flavor of the area and then the historical character of the area. And we are very conscious, and the clients are very conscious of maintaining that. And they hope that this reduction will be met with some approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant on this one? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
Push back through the slides. So all the tails that you see there in red, most likely, they were built not originally to the building, but in the early 19th century. I'm sorry, early 20th century, early 1900s. So they've been there for quite some time. They have, we did look at the Sanborn maps. They have shown there since the mid-'20s to the mid-'50s. So it's not something that... Sorry? No, not before that. The original, I would imagine the original volumes were just the rectangle of the main building. Yes, let me go back to that. Let me go back to photos in the back here. So the wall down here, where their hand is, that is the wall of the original building. The extension is just this part here, and the penthouse is what you see above the top. So the balcony doors are the originals.
And I would just like to add that where it's written, yes, this one, Mr. Blazek did mention that there were some interesting bricks that were aligned here, and that's what we tried to photograph as well. And we would be preserving that because we think that's very beautiful.
We're adding six feet to it, basically. It's a full second-story addition because the current roof slopes up.
Yes, Commissioner Wilder.
Do you have any, I'm sorry, do you have any images of the other side showing the stair up to the top of the... The proposed?
So you can see the stair in the two bottom photos here, basically leading from the main roof up to our roof. So it gets onto the elevated roof and then onto our new addition.
All right, and I think you may have answered this for Commissioner Goldblum, but I might have missed it. So all of the L's in the block plan that are red on your side of the street are four stories and basement. And it seems like the buildings are also four stories and basement. So do they all go full height, all of those L's?
All of those, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we showed some of them in this photo here. You can see the bottom row is the L's that are our neighbors, basically.
All right, and then you have the 17-story building next to you, or no, two doors over. Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Can you go to a roof plan again? You may have tried this already, but I'm just curious. If you were to reconfigure the stair coming up where the skylight is and have the mechanical room behind it, which is existing right now.
Correct.
Would that have made a more efficient roof plan that may not have even incurred the need for the addition off the L piece?
Go back to the roof photograph at the beginning. So basically, the stair that we proposed would be alongside here. So there's only about three feet of clearance right there. So you're saying by eliminating that stair, we have added space, we have shifted this landing over and moved it over?
Yeah, yeah.
Possibly, but we're gaining three feet towards about a three-foot space right now. So again, it just becomes either a bowling alley corridor or just transition and access space and not real living space.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? All right, I think we can start our discussion. And I'll note that Historic District Council did submit a letter, which was shared with the commission in advance of today's public meeting. So this application previously came to us as a two-story cantilevered rooftop addition. And at that time, I think that all of the commissioners present felt that that two stories and cantilever really obscured the original reading and confused the original reading of the building. And so the applicants are back today with the addition, which now eliminates the cantilevered portion of it and sits on the footprint of the building and the L. And so we'll have a discussion. We have a block plan, which shows many full-height rear L's as well as larger apartment buildings in the block. So that context, I think, will be part of this discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. This is kind of very exemplary of what you see on the Upper East Side. A lot of mess at the back. I think that had the existing... I mean, I think that the overall context argues for this to be appropriate simply because there have been so many changes to this incredibly un-uniform space as to render the original thought about the donut as a semi-public space to almost be eradicated, you know? I think that the underlying principle of our thinking about the courtyards, the interior courtyards, the donuts, as being worthy of LPC review is that they constitute a semi-public kind of space, that they are... They have an integrity and a presence that is part of the historic experience of the district or the place. This kind of doesn't feel like that to me. It is a vestige. It has no form. And the modifications have basically scarred or erased the, any sense of uniformity that the rows might have had. So I guess the cow's out of the barn. And once that, once I kind of thought about that from that perspective, the only, the only other reason to not find it appropriate, I think, would be the retention of a sense of the original historic volume of the building. But again, since, since the, since there is ready a rooftop addition that basically steps on that, that too is a done deal. So I don't think that, you know, the two-story nature of a rear yard addition that meets the rear facade of the building is something that we almost never approve of. I can't think of a case anyway. You know, so, but I think this is a particularly unusual condition. In this case, I can, I can find it appropriate.
Right. Vice Chair Master.
Yeah, I found this one a little bit challenging, just to understand the volume. But I understand that the applicant went back and reduced the massing significantly, they said, by 60%. And given the context of what's going on in the neighboring buildings, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum, and I can also find this appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Nkwe.
I guess I'm also in agreement with what's been said. The, just based on the nature of what's happening within the context of the space, I do believe it's in alignment with the character of what's already happening within the space. So I can find it appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, and again, this is, I think for me, it is really more of a, also a massing question. And as was stated, how the addition affects the historic massing prior to the addition is what I was looking at. And the fact that this seems to have been an L configuration and plan that had equal roof height makes somewhat of a difference to me in that typically, we were used to seeing a single floor at the top that is taller on the main house mass, and in this case, it wasn't. And I think that the reduction helps also because the addition does appear to be a setback piece off of the L. So I think that this revision from a massing perspective is more sensitive, and I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Wilder.
Yeah, I think the things for me were the, just the context of the surrounding area. And also the reduction. I didn't, I wasn't here for the original hearing, but I think I can appreciate reducing the size, overall volume of the space, so I find it appropriate.
Commissioner Mahan.
I also having a hard time wrestling with this one. I personally had a very difficult time following exactly what the proposal is and how it compares to what is there. And some more direct comparisons would have been much appreciated. You know, the, you know, presentation is in part of... Appreciate Commissioner Goldblum's, you know, comment that there's a kind of mess at the rooftops on the Upper East Side. Quite typically, I can't say I'm, I'm inclined to, you know, there add to that. Given that, that I wasn't here last time, you know, and the visibility seems to be fairly minimal. Perhaps I could support this. I do find in the sign of it, you know, I think we do massing, but L as well and L of this white picket presence of the flues you know, adds to that mess. And maybe that's something that staff could work on with the applicant. Reduce the sort of visual, the noise created by this addition.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with many of the commissioners' comments.
Okay.
Can I make, I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Chu, please go ahead.
Just in reference to Frank's comment, I do, I forgot to mention on the side elevation, I did find it a bit odd, the brick transition to the stucco finish in terms of how well the addition mass as a whole read in relation to the existing mass was a bit confusing. And I agree that, that I think the applicant needs to work with staff on refining that approach.
Okay. All right, so I think that given the context within this block and the interior and the level of alterations in other large buildings, the commission will support the proposed addition today, but we will ask that you continue to work with the staff to refine some of the details and materials at the, at the addition. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion?
Sure. Regarding 57 East 73rd Street in the Upper East Side Historic District, the application is to construct a rooftop and rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That further alterations at the roof and rear facade of the building, which includes a rear L and a penthouse built on the rear parapet of the building will not detract from an initial intact facade composition or eliminate any unifying features of the row, which has also been highly altered. That the replacement of the existing penthouse with a new brick-and-stucco-clad penthouse aligning with the rear facade and extending over a portion of the rear L will not significantly change the overall mass of the building, will be compatible with the surrounding context, which includes nearby taller buildings within the block. And that the proposed work will only be minimally visible from a gap between the buildings at a distance over secondary facades and against a background of tall buildings and will feature a simple profile, typical materials and finishes, which will blend with the surrounding context. However, I ask that the applicant, suggest the applicant work with the staff to refine the details, including how the brick side wall meets the stuccoed front wall, the details of the railings, and other aesthetic details and refinements that would lead to a cleaner final result.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Here, Carol.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Ekwembe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved, but please continue to work carefully with the staff. And we'll now move to our public hearing agenda.
Right, we'll start with public hearing item number one, LPC 25-09193, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 8025, Lot 1, 604 Shore Road in the Douglasston Historic District. This is a colonial revival style freestanding house designed by J. H. Cornell and built in 1919, and the application is to modify paving and garden walls.
Morning, I'm Quincy Hammond, landscape architect for the owners of 604 Shore Road in the Douglasston Historic District. The existing architecture has been classified by the LPC as colonial revival. However, it does have distinct Italian influences in the large overhanging eaves and the green tile roof. And it also has some Georgian characteristics as well in the pronounced entry and also in the limestone details that you see studded throughout the brick in the diamond squares and keystones of the arches. These details make the house more stylish than just a standard colonial revival. And in conjunction with the orientation of the house on, which spans over a double lot and faces the water, the house has a sense of grandeur and prominence that we believe justifies the appropriateness of our proposed landscape modifications. These are photos of the existing house and landscape. The primary things to note here are that the pizza oven in the corner of, you can see in image B, was in, present at designation. And other than that, however, none of this, none of the ironwork or bricks or capstones were present at designation. This, we are not proposing to modify the footprint of the, of the interior courtyard space at all, except for, to eliminate this sort of odd bump out associated with the garage structure that you can see in image I, and also eliminate that sort of trellis that's on the garage. These are the images from the time of designation, and then in the bottom right, the 1940s image that we have. Image A, you can see, I have an enlargement of this, that you can see the pizza oven in the corner of the courtyard. There were obviously some walls to some extent, but we can't see any railings or piers of any kind. Going back to the rest of the images from designation, there were driveway piers on the north and south driveways. You can see in image B, there, the piers there. Those piers were eliminated by, removed by my clients in order to access the driveway. There is only nine foot space between the piers, and they had to replace the septic system, and the septic truck could not access the property with the piers in place. There, the south piers are still in place. However, we would like to eliminate those for the same reason that the nine-foot distance limits access to the property from larger vehicles and like fire trucks and moving trucks. This is the existing site plan where you can see the driveway coming in from both the north and the south sides of, of the property. As I said, the north piers were previously removed. The south piers are currently in place. The driveways are approximately 12 feet wide, that widen to approximately 20 feet in order to access the double garage. The footprint of the, as I said, is not being modified of the walls of the courtyard, except to remove that odd bump out. We're also proposing to replace the paving at the front walk. This is the demolition plan showing the removal of the concrete driveways and the removal of the paving within the courtyard. The walls themselves are not changing, only the, the cap details of the walls. So the coping and the balustrades, we're removing the iron and brick piers. This is the proposed site plan. The north driveway from Warwick Avenue is a decorative cobble driveway with a pattern. It's just a black and white, you know, salt and pepper granite cobble driveway with a parking area that is concrete with a cobble border. The south driveway, we're trying to introduce a little bit more lawn into that space to, to have a little bit more impervious paving while still, this, while still allowing this to be accessible to the garage, because the garage is accessible from both sides. Within the courtyard, we are proposing to replace the existing bluestone paving with a material called madras, which is a sandstone that is very similar to the limestone details on the house. But it is cold hardy to this area. We're also proposing to replace the front walkway with the, the light colored madras sandstone. I did bring samples of the materials if anyone would like to review those in person. These are the elevations, both existing and proposed. You can see the existing ironwork on top of the walls. And as I said, the walls themselves, the brick walls themselves do not change in height, only the, the cap detail and the balustrades. And in the north elevation, we're replacing the gate with a slightly more elaborate wrought iron gate design. The east elevation shows the removal of the pizza oven in favor of a, an outdoor fireplace that is centered within the wall of the courtyard. The heights of the pizza oven and the proposed fireplace are very close. I believe it's eight foot five for the pizza oven and eight foot seven for the outdoor fireplace. And the south elevation shows the same wrought iron versus the cast limestone balustrading. The interior elevations in more detail. This of the north wall shows the pizza oven and where the pizza oven would be removed. This is the east wall elevation existing, showing the pizza oven in the corner and also the built-in barbecue, both of which would be removed in favor of the centrally located limestone fireplace. We also would replace the gates with the new design, both single gates with side panels, similar to what's there, but slightly more elaborate. And also the removal of the bump out and the trellis on the garage. And the south wall elevation. These are the photo montages showing the existing at the top with the iron railings. And lower left shows the limestone balustrade. You can see in context with the architecture, the limestone details of the architecture, it starts to pull those limestone elements out into the landscape. You can also see the, the softer paving adjacent to the garage. Just, you know, like I say, more, less impervious than the solid concrete. And then the lower right image shows the plantings that are in front of the proposed balustrade. On the north, the north view from Warwick Avenue driveway, showing the existing in, on the top. And in the bottom, the hardscape elements with the cobble detailed driveway and the fire, limestone fireplace, the limestone balustrading and the single gate. And then the lower right showing the proposed plantings, how that would interact with the proposed hardscape elements. This property, Burrwood, which is an historic estate that's no longer in existence in Cold Spring Harbor, New York, was the inspiration behind the design. You can see that it has a similar roof eve detail to 604 Shore Road with the overhanging eaves and also the brick with the limestone balustrade and architectural detailing on the house and how the, the balustrades, the light colored balustrades, these are actually marble, whereas we're proposing the cast limestone. But you can see how they, they draw the architecture out into the landscape and associate and ground the architecture. Also, part of this structure were elaborate wrought iron gates, which we're also proposing to have. Throughout the neighborhood, these are some of the existing driveways on nearby properties, showing the widths, which are generally 12 feet wide, 10 feet wide, 16 feet wide, varying widths. We're proposing 12 feet wide. And in the lower right-hand corner is 237 Hollywood Avenue, which you approved, that shows a driveway that widens to a parking area associated with the garage, the same as how, what we're proposing. These are other driveways throughout Douglas Manor, showing all the different sizes and shapes and patterns of cobble, everything from squares and rectangles to irregular granite and also the grass strips. These are examples of existing cast and wrought iron gates throughout Douglas Manor. These are images showing other properties with pronounced balustrading throughout Douglas Manor. This is a closer detail of the fireplace that shows the limestone veneer and what would be a marble mantle and frame for the television. The materials are pictured in the bottom right, but I also have samples of those, if you'd like to see. These are the cast limestone balustrade elements, the planters, the piers, the posts and the caps and railings. They're made by a company called Haddon Stone, which is very well-known for making historical elements. And it's a, as I say, a cast limestone. These are the paving details. The, the bottom left shows the madras, which is a light colored sandstone to match the limestone, and then the salt and pepper granite cobbles. The closer detail of the gates, one single gate and one, two single panel gates with side panels. And in conclusion is a montage of the, the views, the, the views of the property from the south driveway existing, proposed with the limestone balustrade and also with the plantings. And on the bottom, the view from the north driveway from Warwick Avenue with the balustrades and the fireplace and the paving and with the proposed plantings. Thank you very much. Welcome your comments and questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions at this time, commissioners? All right, Commissioner Chu, did you have a question? It looked like you might.
I, I think I understand that the samples that were passed around really reflected the paving and that, that marble was just the, the ornament detail within the fireplace.
Exactly.
But the predominant use of materiality is limestone and cast limestone?
Yes.
Okay. You didn't, that wasn't a sample that was passed around, right?
Which one?
The limestone.
The, the limestone is there, yes.
Oh, is, oh, I didn't see that. I guess it went the other way. Thank you.
The smaller one is the cast limestone. I believe it has an H on it. And then the other, they're labeled on the back. Yeah.
Then just a functional question, does it? I'm guessing you've, you've already researched this, but putting the television right over the fireplace, does that make sense? Is that a problem? I don't.
No.
Okay.
Built so that the heat stays within the chimney of the fireplace and doesn't affect.
All right, thanks.
All right, other questions? Okay, we'll move to public testimony. We may have more questions after that.
Okay.
And we do have one person in person who signed up, Jeremy Woodoff. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jeremy Woodoff, speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. Founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. VSNY finds that the overall character of 604 Shore Road will be overwhelmed by the number of decorative details the applicants are proposing to add to the existing garden enclosures. Because Douglasston was originally designed to be a garden suburb, the Victorian Society typically opposes the addition of walls, fences, and hedges in the district. However, we find that the existing garden walls at 604, which are not mentioned in the designation report, do not detract from the overall character of the house or the district. This is in part because of the large size of the lot and also because the walls are detailed in a manner which both reflects and defers to what we consider the arts and crafts detailing of the main house. That won't be the case if the changes we're seeing today are approved. The applicants are proposing the addition of cast limestone piers, railings, balusters, coping and urns, an elaborate iron gate, limestone and marble cladding on the existing fireplace, and a three-tier fountain, which will be visible through the baluster's Ungovernor Street. While a few of these elements might be individually acceptable, especially on a more grandiose, bazaar, or colonial revival house, the cumulative effect on this house is not. We ask that no action be taken today, and the applicant return with a significantly simplified design, eliminating most of the proposed changes, which are stylistically incompatible with the historic house and which draw attention away from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Stephen Thompson, to see if we have any remote participants.
Who's joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. I'll be promoting to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic Districts Council. HGC finds some elements of this proposal to be inappropriate. This house is colonial revival with elements of craftsmen or arts and craft styles. We find the proposed masonry and ironwork elements to be overwrought for the style of this house. We recommend that a simpler design be investigated by LPC staff and the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. No other attendees. I'll note for the record that Queens Community Board 11 recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
I don't think so. I think that the main point is that there seem to be differences of opinion on the stylistic character of the house, where we would call it Italianate and Georgian influenced. They're calling it arts and crafts. And so that, I think, is the main point of diversion in the arguments.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any final questions? All right, then I think we'll close the hearing and move to our discussion. Commissioner Ekwembe, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Vice Chair Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we're looking at a proposal to essentially legalize brick walls that were installed around courtyards on this property without permits sometime. brick walls that were installed around courtyards on this property without permits sometime after designation, and then adding additional ornament, a fireplace, and decorative paving and ironwork around the property. And the applicant has pointed out that this is a large house spanning two lots, so it has, in some ways, some distance from the street that where other houses that might want fences wouldn't be so distant from the street, and that may be something to think about. And I think we'll have a discussion about the style, materiality, and the relationship to the building. So Commissioner Mann, would you like to start this one?
Given, I understand that these walls and these gates and sort of enclosed, added without review, but given the way that they harmonize with the predominant materiality of the building, that seems acceptable. The limestone detailing, you know, within the odds of the building itself, regardless of what style we call it, you know, is quite discreet and has a strong character as being quite small but high-contrast elements. I personally find the introduction of the cast stone balustrade, as well as the, if I recall, it's cast stone, limestone fireplace, to detract from the sort of presence of the house and the garage itself. Okay with the, of these balls, but I think that they should be held in materiality that doesn't detract from the main house itself. I'm okay with all of the pavement cells on the horizontal surfaces.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm generally in agreement with Commissioner Mann, and as Commissioner Chu pointed out, I think the fireplace is kind of unusual, and I, given the variety of the kind of paving that already starting to exist in this district, I have no problem with the paving, but I think, in general, I think they should work with the staff in terms of the other finishes.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I agree. There's a Yiddish word for this. It's like unga-pachd. It means like kind of a little bit much, you know? I think that the gates, the design of the gates, the urns, it's taking it in a turn. I mean, the house is not a, it's not gaudy, it's not, I don't know, showy. It's simple. It's got a kind of solidity. I think Frankie used that word. I think that it's a good house, and to try to turn it into something that it's not, is not serving the purpose of historic preservation. I think that the additions can be made in general, but I think that the tone and style has to kind of get, has to look more at the house as it is and not as they might want it to be.
Vice Chair Master?
Yeah, I think that the paving is fine. I think that the fireplace that's clad in the limestone or the marble or the white is very stark, and it does kind of detract from the house. So, you know, they might want to consider brick, you know, to match the walls and the house. In terms of the balustrades, I'm more okay with it, because a lot of it is actually covered by the plantings. However, I do agree with the Commissioners that perhaps if they did add a little bit more brick to it, it might not stand out as much.
Commissioner Ekumbey?
Yes, excuse me. In general, I find the concept to be okay. The paving, I actually enjoy it, but I believe just the combination of everything is a little overwhelming. And as was stated by my fellow Commissioners, I believe that it should be pulled back a bit, just to not compete with the house, which is a great house, but it should be more in harmony with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
I'm in agreement with my fellow Commissioners. I don't, the only thing I would add is that the precedent that was added, the Burrwood House, does incorporate a lot of this lighter-toned balustrade into the architecture of the house, which makes it more in keeping. And yeah, I think generally the comment is, it increases this procession and grandeur beyond what I think is why this house was, why it was designated as it was, and it is much more simple. I also find that the almost Cypress, Italian Cypress processional entry to the driveways is too much, and it does obscure the simple view of the existing house and the massing of the complex. So yeah, I think that in general, the concepts and what's being done is quite minimal, but the visual impact of the stark white everywhere does really change and alter my perspective of the view of the house as a whole on the site. So I do think that they should work with staff on the finishes. The fireplace mass is much too large to stand out as a white element to draw your attention. Yeah.
Right. Commissioner Wilder?
Yeah, I think I agree with a lot of the comments. We're looking at the fireplace, I think, the size of it, I'm not, it seems to, it seemed that it would distract no matter what the material would be, but it definitely shouldn't be the material that's being proposed now. And similar to the example of Burrwood, in terms of the balustrades, I think there was a better balance of brick and limestone in that example versus what is shown here. So maybe, I don't mind, I don't mind the addition of the limestone, but just a better balance, because it feels overpowering, almost as if the brick isn't even there in some of these images. And yeah, I think those are pretty much my main two points.
All right. Okay, all right, so I think that the existence of the walls and the decorative paving, I think, are fine in concept, but the Commission has, I think, almost uniformly commented on the stylistic, some of the stylistic elements and ornament and the finishes and materiality. And so I think we'll go ahead and make, take an action, make a motion today to approve it conceptually with the modification that they continue to work with the staff on the details of the ornament and the material and tonality of the elements. So, comfortable adding that modification? Okay.
Regarding 604 Shore Road, Dougliston Historic District. Application is to modify paving and garden walls. Okay. Oh, okay, excuse me. Okay, in the matter of docket number LPC 25-09193, 604 Shore Road, Dougliston Historic District. Colonial revival-style freestanding house designed by J. H. Cornell and built in 1919. Application is to modify paving and garden walls. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Dougliston Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the garden walls and driveway piers do not appear to be original to the house and are not unique or representative of fine craftsmanship, and the outdoor oven and paving are modern, therefore, the proposed modifications and removals will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed cast stone balustrades and black painted metal gates will be well-scaled to the house and, well-scaled to the house. That the installation of ornamental features, such as balustrades and urns at the garden walls, scrollwork at the metal gates, and decorative paving patterns at the driveways, paths, and patio will be compatible with the high style of the colonial revival-style house. That the alterations to the garden walls and new gates and fireplace will adjoin the rear sections of the house partially screened by evergreen plantings and will only be partially visible from public thoroughfares across deepside yards, limiting their visual impact on the site. And that the driveways, paths, and patio featuring granite block, sandstone, and concrete paving will be consistent with hardscaping found at properties within the historic district in terms of its materials and color palette and its scale in relation to the house and site. However, I recommend the applicant work with staff to re-study the style and scale of the ornament and the materiality of the balustrades, fireplace, and ornament.
And the ironwork, thank you.
And the ironwork.
All right. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
And John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Commissioner Ekumbey?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved, but there is quite a bit of study to do, so please continue to work closely with the staff on that. All right, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 25-12401. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of the Bronx. This is an early 20th century planned suburban community characterized by an eclectic variety of residential styles set amidst a variety of varied topography of winding tree-lined streets and dramatic rock outcroppings. I neglected to read it, Fieldston Historic District, so it's a district-wide application or installation that's being proposed. And this application is to specifically install street signage throughout the district.
Please go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ben Weiss, and I'm the President of the Fieldston Property Owners Association. Today, we're presenting a comprehensive signage replacement proposal for the Fieldston Historic District in the Bronx. Just wanted to give you a look at the district. I want to just give you a little context on the district. So the district is bounded by the east side on, east of Tibbett Avenue, all the way to Henry Hudson Parkway on the west, Manhattan College Parkway on the south, and just north of 250th Street on the north side. This district was put together back in 1829 when Delfield family owned the property. They laid out lots in 1909 for private homes after the subway was set up, and today we have about 268 homes in the district. FPOA was established in 1923 after 80 homes were put together specifically to maintain security, the streets, trees, and sewers. The project is really about replacement of inconsistent and deteriorated signs. The aluminum regulatory signs for parking and entranceways alongside carved entrance signs to mark the entries to the neighborhood. As you'll note on the diagram, there are nine entranceways into the neighborhood today that we want to, again, improve, and our intention is to have a coordinated system that serves both practical and ceremonial functions appropriate to the historic district. So just looking at the aluminum signage to begin with, this is really high-quality aluminum signage with reflective surfaces, intended to stand on three- and four-inch diameter fluted aluminum poles, concrete foundations, global finials, and mini-Americanas bases in black, consistent with the signage in the neighborhood installed by many of the Hill schools. These provide clear regulatory messages while maintaining appropriate historical character. Looking at the carved signs, which you could see labeled here, connected to the pillars, these are one-and-a-half-inch carved exterior signs with gold leaf lettering, again, consistent with some of the signage we already have in the neighborhood, mounted on existing stone pillars where possible or with standalone versions as needed. This craftsmanship provides the dignified gateway identity appropriate for Fieldston's historic character. We then have individual, and this is additional information around each sign, the specifications, which are available for the record, and we can go through details as needed. Just to show individual placements, what you'll see is 246th and Henry Hudson Parkway, which is one of the main entrances into the neighborhood. Today, we have two stone pillars. We have a sign on the right-hand side behind the stone pillar that provides that regulatory information. As we lean in a little bit closer, you could see the inconsistency in the signs. You could see that the second sign, the one in the middle, has a bunch of puncture marks on there. There's a bunch of issues relating to these signs. The proposed approach is one where we put up new signage that's more visible from the road and consistent with a consistent, single-coordinated system. Delfield Avenue and Manhattan College Parkway is another entranceway. You can see here, again, signage on both sides of the street and in the street as well. This is, you know, again, very different messaging that you'll find across the neighborhood. We're proposing, again, consistent messaging with that entryway sign on the left, I'm sorry, on the right-hand side. Fieldston Road, which is our main road in the district, again, we have signage in the center as well as on the right-hand side. Our intention is to take these signs, which are, again, not particularly in great shape and inconsistent across all the different entranceways, and replace it with, again, the consistent signage. Tibbett Avenue, Waldo Avenue, here, we actually only have, we have three stone pillars, as you'll notice. In front of us, there's actually a fourth that's off on the right-hand side. Our intention here is to make sure that the signs are consistent. What you'll notice is that the sign today says Fieldston Community, private community as opposed to private streets, as it says on 246. Again, we're looking for consistency in that approach. Okay, so consistency up Waldo and up Tibbett Avenue, independent of which way you're going, you're going to see the same signs. On Waldo and 246th Street, today, we have one sign here, again, this is the boundary of the neighborhood. of the neighborhood from a street perspective, so we did want to have, again, consistent signage. You'll notice that we do have a sign on Cayuga Avenue today, which is just ahead of where the district begins. The intention here is to remove that signage and to not replace it as we expect to have that sign on Waldo and 246, just up the block in the correct location. On Tibbett and College Avenue on 252nd Street, you'll notice the signage is only really on the Tibbett side. It's actually very hard to note whether College Ave. is included, even though there is a portion there that is. Our intention, again, is to take these signs that are not in great shape and replace them with one, again, consistent set of signs. And this way, put it in a central location so that it's visible both for College Ave. And for Tibbett Avenue. The next one is Fieldston Road north of 250th Street. Here, we have a one-way entranceway. And again, you'll see different signage on the left and the right-hand side. We're proposing having one consistent set of signs on the left-hand side, again, consistent with the signage we've just been looking at. On Iceland Avenue and 252nd, coming into the district, we have signage on the left-hand side and the right-hand side. Again, we're looking to replace that with one set of signage on the right-hand side where the driver would be coming in. And then finally, Delfield and 250th Street. Today, we have a signage that's right in front of this private home. Again, somewhat different messaging. Again, on this sign, again, poor shape. Replacing that, again, with new inconsistent signage. Just for context, additionally, on the parking signs, today, we have close to 100 signs in the neighborhood across the district. These signs are in varying states and also on varying different sorts of constructs. We're intending to have this also consistent as we showed in the first set of slides. Just wanted to give you a sampling of what these look like and why the issue is so critical today. So just in closing, the intention is to have a coordinated system that respects Fieldston's historic character while meeting practical signage needs. We have full community support, and funding is in place. We respectfully request the Commissioner's approval and welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions, Commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Chen, followed by Commissioner Chu and then Commissioner Wilder.
How are these signs maintained?
How are the signs maintained?
Yeah.
Today, we do have a landscaper that comes into the neighborhood and does clean the signs every now and again, but that's the full extent of it.
Right. Reason for asking is that, given the human nature, that these intersections, a lot of times, may be dented by vehicles or damaged. And then visibility at nighttime, there's no lighting, correct?
There's no lighting. That's correct. These are reflective signs, but yeah.
Okay. Okay. Let me get in order. Okay, Commissioner Chu?
Can you go back, or just to the first slide with the district map? Your key? I think it's probably your second slide of the whole deck.
Apologies.
Thanks. Okay, so this is the proposed or existing?
This is existing. And the proposed as well.
And the proposed.
We're not switching locations with the exception of the sign on Cayuga Avenue.
Okay. So basically, you're identifying the district and the private streets at the main entries into the district.
That's correct.
Which is clear. I just wondered whether or not you, because of your clarity of parking signage, if you could reduce some of those, because it seems like they're all over the place in the same, like, right next to each other. And that might be because of the scattered, ad hoc nature of what's there now.
Yeah, it's a great question. And as you can imagine, it's a hot debate internally. The biggest issue, I think, is relating to the traffic associated with Horace Mann School, which is right by that corner. So there's a whole bunch of parents and students that will park or attempt to park in that specific area. So that's why we have so many signs specifically on Tibbett and Waldo and 245th and College Ave. And Waldo, just in that specific area. The intention with the vendor and actually working in partnership with Horace Mann is to keep that reduced to the amount of signs that we truly need.
Right, I mean, I don't know that there's any study to support it, but if they're breaking the law, already, I'm sure they saw the sign. They're just doing it anyway. I don't know if adding more signs is helping the case.
It's a fair point, and it's a highly contested discussion internal to the neighborhood. I think we are trying to both meet the requirements of the school and meet the requirements of the residents in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it almost looks like, if I'm reading the scale right, that there's a sign per house. It seems really intense.
It's considerable, particularly on that spot.
Right.
It's a fair point. And happy to bring that back to the.
Yeah, because they are quite tall. Their visual impact is tremendous when they're added together so many times.
That's right. That's right. I mean, part of this was also to, again, reduce the number of signs on that on the block alongside consistent signage, because each sign on that block is actually just a little different.
Right, right. Thank you.
Do you have a photo of that particular, one of those stretches where they are side by side?
I don't, but I'm happy to provide it.
Commissioner Wilder?
The existing Fieldston sign, what's the size of it? And is it matching the color? Is it the same color proposed for the new signage?
The color is consistent. The signage size, I don't have it offhand. I know I shared it with Lisa, and I'm sure we can get that.
Is it smaller or?
It's smaller. Part of the discussion with the design firm that we worked with was having something that was very easily visible from the street. And I think in a private car, this will be a bit larger, but it enables easier visibility.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Could you come up with the height of the tall poles? And is it the same all the way through?
It should be consistent throughout. I believe this is consistent with what others are doing in the neighborhood.
Other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you after that. Jeremy Woodof?
Good morning again. Jeremy Woodof speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society finds that the proposed street signs and signposts to be sensitively designed additions to the Fieldston streetscape. We assume the proposed signs are one-for-one replacements of existing signs. But in some places, the smaller signs seem to be extremely close to each other, as has just been discussed. Perhaps they can be spaced more generously. Some of the existing signposts incorporate decorative scrollwork. We wonder whether these posts are historic. If so, they should be retained and incorporated into the signage plan. If they're modern, we have no objection to their removal. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll note that there is no one else in the room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. And we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Being done, I'll note for the record that Bronx Community Board Eight recommends approval.
Would you like to address the testimony or answer the question?
I want to reiterate again that we will certainly revisit the number of signs, for sure.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? Then I think we can move to our discussion. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Slow move.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing's closed, and we'll begin our discussion to replace the sort of ad hoc signage with new consistently designed signage, three different types and in the same locations, although the applicant has indicated that they would continue to study the number. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start?
Sure. I'd say I know this neighborhood pretty well. It's, I'm not a resident, but I'm a neighbor, and I can certainly attest to the importance of Fieldston as a historic, deeply loved historic place in our neighborhood. It's quite true that the signage is a bit of a train wreck and has a very ad hoc appearance. One tends not to notice it because of that. It kind of just blends into the junk that one normally sees. But I think that, I mean, interestingly, I think by making it uniform and tidy, it'll actually make it more visible. But I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that it's there. It does kind of clutter the view of the historic neighborhood and the lovely homes. And I think that the proposal is very appropriate, generally very nicely detailed. There's no question that Tibbett and some of those other areas that are beset by Fieldston or Horace Mann Moms should be reexamined. And I trust the applicant will work with staff on that. I think, for me, I think some of the signs, the general information signs, look to me a bit too tall from the renderings. One of the things about this area is that in addition to car traffic, there's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people walking to and around the neighborhood and using it as a pedestrian as opposed to driving through it. And I think that those signs are important for those folks, too. And they just kind of, you know, I think the applicant should work with the staff on that as well and just have a look at the height. And, you know, I think that they're a little bit too high for pedestrians, and they kind of give it a bit of a monumental scale that might be looked at.
Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think that there's no question that the signs that they're proposing is an upgrade from what there was before. You know, the consistency of the look on the green. You know, I think it's a really, it's a really nice upgrade. And in terms of the number of signs, I understand, I kind of empathize with what's going on there, because I also, in my neighborhood, we have a private school. And when there's a big event, the parking is out of control. It goes blocks and blocks. And people park on both sides of the street, so no one really can get through. So I understand why there is the number of signs. But I do think that they can probably work with staff to look at the height and then explore whether the number is appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Ekwembe?
As I said, I believe the introduction of the signs is a great improvement. I appreciate the uniformity and also the, I guess, the attention to the, I guess, the place itself and trying to expand on it. I also agree with the fact, with the number of signs that, I guess, presently exist and that may need to be reexamined. But I'm sure with the staff, that can be looked at, and that won't be a problem.
Okay. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that my fellow Commissioners have stated my feelings on this. The graphics in general, I think, are positive. They will help define the district better in terms of its extents and its location and give it a greater sense of identity. But as with most good graphics, they will do that job, but hopefully require less repetition. So again, if the applicant can work with the staff on the quantity, and as Michael's mentioned, the scale or height of the signs, otherwise, I think it's an appropriate proposal.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Yeah, I agree with fellow Commissioners. I did. I was interested in seeing the size of the signs. I think three feet, it seemed fairly large. But I wanted to know what was the comparison of the other sign. But I don't really have, I don't really have an issue. It was appropriate.
Commissioner Mann?
I agree with the other Commissioners. It was a very nice presentation and, you know, nice design intent and seems to be exactly what it should be. Thank you.
Right, and Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with the comments as well as the word "ad hoc" has been used several times, including the chair. And I appreciate the comments about Michael Boom's, Goldblum's observation about the height and then the scale and the numbers. So they should work with the staff.
Okay. All right, so I think we're all in agreement to approve and ask them All right, so I think we're all in agreement to approve and ask them to continue to study the height and the number of signs needed with the staff.
Okay, regarding LPC 25-12401, Fieldston Historic District, the application is to install street signage throughout the district. I note that the streets in Fieldston are private, although open to the public. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed informational signs will mostly replace existing signs and will be installed in areas of grass or dirt and will not damage or eliminate any significant historic paving or landscape features. That the new signs will replace a variety of signage types and sizes to create a unified appearance of signage throughout the district. That the painted metal material and standard dimensions of the signs are typical for street signage in residential neighborhoods, that the black poles and green signs will relate well to the suburban character of the district, which features lush green landscapes, and that the proposed signs will not detract from the historic picturesque landscape of the Fieldston Historic District. However, the applicant will work with staff to examine the height of the highest signage and the frequency and placement of the parking signs along certain streets where they are rather dense.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Master. Would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Quembe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Eighteen favorite and nine opposed. The motion passes.
All right, that's approved, thank you. We'll continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next item.
The next item is Public Hearing Item Number Three, LPC 25-12960. This is an application for a binding report in the Borough of Brooklyn, St. Mark's Playground in the Crown Heights North Three Historic District. This is a playground installed within a super block designed by Paul Friedberg and built in 1969. The application is to replace pavers, walls, and fencing.
Good morning, my name is Paul Kedanakis. I'm a landscape architect with New York City Parks and Recreation. I'm joined by Imelda Bernstein, Sybil Young, and Dennis Flynn at New York City Parks. And we have Nicholas Pettenati at New York City DOT. We're here today to seeking approval for the reconstruction of St. Mark's Playground and the associated sidewalks. We have approximately $2.8 million and the size is about a quarter acre. The park itself is approximately 7,000 square feet, so it's very small, and the remaining square footage are the sidewalks surrounding. Our project goals are to increase amenities for children, create a design complementary to its history, integrate the park into the streetscape, maintain and improve sightlines and safety, and modify sidewalks to recall the historic paving. St. Mark's Playground is located in the Crown Heights section of Brooklyn, and as you can see, the playground sits actually right in the middle of the street, in the streetbed. This park is maintained and operated by New York City Parks, but it sits on DOT property. Additionally, it sits on one of two super blocks that were designed and constructed in 1969. And because we are doing the sidewalks surrounding in our project limit, what we do in our proposal will affect the rest of the block. The original playground has been fully reconstructed since that time in 2002 and in and of itself is not necessarily a landmark, but it sits in the Crown Heights North Three Historic District. In response to the riots in 1964, community leaders and community members and elected officials sought to brought, to bring more equitable amenities into the neighborhood. Architect IM Pei created this conceptual master plan here that included larger scale, medium-sized, and small medallion-sized parks throughout, super blocks, which are streets that also include additional amenities, and then using vacant lots to stitch together a path network to create a more intimate feel within the community. None of that was really done, but what did come out of that were these two super blocks that were designed and constructed by landscape architect Paul Friedberg. The north one is St. Mark's, and you can see the playground right in the middle of the street, and then we have the distinctive pavement in the form of brick pavement on the sidewalk. One block to the south is Prospect Place, which is still a through street for cars, but it included some traffic calming measures, distinctive pavement, and other amenities within the block. So this is the original design by Paul Friedberg, again, no longer exists, but we are taking inspiration from this. You can see the walls, there are short walls surrounding much of the park. The park itself is sunken to separate it from the sidewalk. We have steps on the northern side of the park and there are different elevations within the park. And then throughout the park itself, we have four-by-four backless ottomans that are randomly arranged and floating throughout the space. Additionally, they sought to have a unified pavement treatment on the interior and exterior of the park, and that was done in a brick paver that went through the entire park itself. And here are a couple of images of what that looked like back then. The image over here is a little washed out, but you can see the seamless integration of the pavement, you can see bollards and steps and the floating ottomans. The play equipment, the formal play equipment over here is a very rectilinear play equipment with a graphic symbol, which is the only real color that was associated with this work, as everything else is very muted and cohesive. So again, the original park was fully removed, including the walls and the pavement, and was reconstructed in 2002. This park is the existing condition now. We have the play equipment on the western side, spray shower on the eastern side. The areas are surrounded by walls that were constructed at the time with a tall fence surround. The wall on the southern side in the Paul Friedberg design had been removed and replaced with steps, along with steps on the northern side, and the central space has game tables with benches. The pavement on the exterior and interior of the park is an asphalt block pavement and the sidewalks are standard gray concrete pavement. And here is a bird's eye view of what that looks like. You can see the spray shower, the walls, the central space, and the play equipment, the pavement, and the standard gray concrete for the sidewalk. A couple other images, please note the walls. These walls are in very, very good condition as they're only 20 years old, they're a chamfered wall, and we will be reusing them in our design proposal and modifying or expanding upon them in select locations. And here is an image of the central space with the game tables, you can see the bollards and the steps and the pavement on the sidewalk. And here are the two sidewalks, north and south. You can see the pavement, but you can also see this car over here. Unfortunately, people do drive through this, damaging the pavement on the sidewalk and also causing a conflict with park users. So considering that we will be doing the sidewalks associated with the block and that this, with the park and that this is a super block, we wanted to show you the existing condition of the entire block. So currently on all four corners of the block, we have landmarks gray concrete. A small percentage of the sidewalk has the original brick pavers. And then over time, the majority of the sidewalks have been replaced with concrete, standard concrete pavement. So here are a couple of images of what the pavers look like on St. Mark's in the remaining locations, and you can see they are uneven and cracked and broken. And this is really a good example of why DOT is really moving away from using unit pavers such as this on the sidewalks for these types of maintenance, safety, and longevity concerns. This is actually one block south on Prospect Place that also has the same distinctive pavement, and you can imagine that in the areas that have been replaced on St. Mark's, that the pavement probably looks something similar to this. And here are a couple of examples of the replaced concrete along St. Mark's. So we went to our community input meeting and our friends in the community were obviously very concerned with the vehicular conflicts, but also were very interested in expanding this park to include more amenities for children. So, as I mentioned, we wanted to create a design that was complementary to the original Paul Friedberg design, so we're taking inspiration from the walls, the steps, and notice the push and pull, the yin and yang, and the shifting ground planes with the sunken quality, along with the rectilinear play equipment from the original, and then the floating and randomly arranged ottomans. We have a couple of the original trees that are honey locust trees, and unfortunately they have thorns, and expanding the playground for children, it becomes quite dangerous. So we will be taking those out and replacing them with thornless honey locusts. We also had to work with the fire department because of this unique situation in the streetbed, and they do need an easement, and we were really unable to expand the footprint of the playground, nor could we add additional trees along the sidewalk. We have a lot of infrastructure underground that we also have to navigate and makes it a little difficult to arrange the space in general. So in, considering that we would like to add additional play in the yellow, we decided to use the existing walls on the site to include this additional play and expand upon those to enclose the children for a safer experience within the park. So additionally, the spray shower is reduced in size and moved to the center of the space along with the community sitting and open play area. And here is an image of the schematic design. You can see the play areas are surrounded by the walls with a short fence, and here this location, this location, and this location. We have brought back a version of the Paul Friedberg wall on the southern portion of the park, along with arranging the steps on the north in a similar configuration. Our park is also sunken in a similar way, and we play with the shifting ground planes. And then we do have a couple of elements like the bollards at the top of the steps, and we're including one of these ottomans to hearken back to the Paul Friedberg design. The fencing is quite tall and it creates an unpleasant experience and interrupts sightlines on the street, so we will be removing this and replacing it with a lower fence, and you can see the before and after and how much more pleasant and open with better sightlines on the sidewalk and within the park. And you can see what that will look like in this image over here. The wall will now have a one-foot-six or two-foot steel picket fence like the image you see here, only a little bit shorter than this example. And here is a bird's eye of the space. You can see that we have utilized the, unified the space with similar pavement, and the only color really comes from the play features, similar to what Paul Friedberg had done, and is very open with good sightlines and a similar configuration. And here is an image of the central space with the spray shower. The spray shower is only on for three months out of the year, and it is otherwise a lovely sitting area and play space for the children, again, in a very muted palette with the color coming from the play features. So in regards to the materials we are using for the pavement, matching the historic pavers, as I mentioned, isn't necessarily practical for the reasons I described, and since we do have landmarks gray already on the corners, and landmarks gray is also a known product that our contractors understand and is easily matched and duplicated for any work that might happen either maintenance work within our contract limit or potentially outside of our contract limit on the sidewalk, we are choosing to propose a poured concrete landmarks gray, but it will have a 24-inch square sawn joint pattern to hearken back and mimic the pavers. Additionally, the pavement that we use along the interior of the park will be complementary to create that uniform look that was very important as part of the Paul Friedberg design. And here is an image of all of the paving materials together. You can see the concrete ottoman and the bollards. And then the walls that are existing and proposed will be painted in what we call a parks gray color, which is meant to look like concrete. And here we have a comparison of the pavements from the different eras. We have the Paul Friedberg design, the existing, and our proposed. And while slightly different color, you can see the more uniform appearance of the pavement in our proposal is much more in line with what we have for the Paul Friedberg design in contrast to the existing. And then we have some of the forms that we are including in our design from the Paul Friedberg design in contrast to the existing as well. And then looking forward outside of our contract limit as to what might happen on the rest of the block, the landmarks gray concrete with the 24-inch scoring pattern could serve as a model for what could happen on the rest of the block. So I will end with the comparison slide, and I thank you very much for your time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, do we have any questions on this application? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, can you explain the need for the metal railing sitting on top of the low wall?
Yes, so back when Paul Friedberg did this design, standards were quite different in terms of building code. The walls are one and a half foot high on the sidewalk, but as you know, the, as I mentioned, the park is sunken. So current day, we would have to put something on there or somebody could fall and get hurt as that is much too high for the building code, and even with us at the parks department, two-foot drop is a bit high and somebody would get hurt.
Okay, so it's for safety?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, because I think a lot of those low walls which are surrounding this sort of nestled island of a park which you have, and I could totally see and support the idea of integrating the paving so it feels more open to the street, the streetscape, and not feel like a trapped island in the middle. Did you consider versions where the low wall could also accommodate seating? Because I do feel that that's a great place for people to sit and be like a front porch to a lot of, you know, the residents.
We'll go to the schematic.
Yeah.
Here. That was part of the intent of the Paul Friedberg design, so we did understand that. You have to understand also that this is right in front of residential homes, and in general, there are people that come here at night and are nuisance. But there were these moments on the sidewalk, on the walls, where people could stop and sit and have a conversation. So because of the reasons that I mentioned, for safety reasons, we did provide moments with some backless benches on the sidewalk, and then there are some locations where it would not have a fence and people could do that.
Okay, great. The other question is, it struck me that one of the biggest issues, you did have it on one slide, was that cars drive through here, and that just seems terrible and counter to the entire idea. How, I mean, I realize that we need FDNY access through here, is there any method to prevent?
Yes.
How would you do that?
Yes, so we worked with DOT and the fire department on this very closely. We are going to be including some bollards, the removable bollards, on either, one on this side, which is the direction of travel, and then some on this side, which would also be the direction of travel. So people would drive down the street in this location and then they would stop because in this situation, people are supposed to drive around like it's a dead end. So these bollards can be removed by the emergency vehicles when needed, but in general would stop this type of activity from happening.
Okay, and you don't think they're still going to try to go the other way and then get all the way down there and then have to turn back up all the way again?
They're technically not supposed to drive down the sidewalk, so I hope that it, we can only do so much, right?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
So, I'm sorry if I missed this, but you're, the reason that you can't do the Friedberg color is because it's not a standard parks color, or what, you said it was impractical?
Regarding the pavers?
Yeah, well, instead, not to tint your new gray, your new, your new surface to match the Friedberg, you said, was, I think, impractical.
It was mainly the use of the pavers in lieu of the poured concrete that was more practical. And then we also know that, you know, as I said, that the landmarks gray is a very common, almost standard color that is more easily matched, and any number of different things can happen, at least within our site, if DEP needs to get in there to make any alterations, and then also for duplication going forward by the homeowners on the block.
Right.
We felt that this color would be much more easily matched and look more cohesive instead of a hodgepodge. Browns can tend to fade and would be more difficult to match in general.
And how does the MOV come into that calculation?
Well, so we did want to sort of identify locations for play in the park, so in the spray shower area, we decided to add that in simply to create sort of an area rug and a place within the park to identify it as special, but it is somewhat muted.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions? Commissioner Chen.
Just out of the curiosity, the background behind the concept of super block and why this park came to being?
Mel, did you want to speak to that, or I can do that?
Hi, my name is Imelda Bernstein and I'm from New York City Parks Capital. And the concept of the super block was, it came out, I think, going back even to like the riots in 1968 and Robert Kennedy running for president, he was Senator of New York. And when he was touring the inner cities, he was hearing from the people, like, what are you going to do for us? So really, you know, we hear all this talk, but what can you do? And I think this idea of investing in this neighborhood, the first reinvestment corporation, it's Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation, although this neighborhood is not quite Bed-Stuy, but it was formed. And while they were also looking at economic opportunities and ideas to generate economic opportunities for the neighborhood, they were also looking at urban design interventions and how to make the neighborhood, to bring the community together and provide these spaces for people. to bring the community together and provide these spaces for people to come together. And so that was the impetus. I think the Astor Foundation provided the money for the pilot projects, which are the two that Paul talked about on Prospect Place and St. Mark's. That answered your question.
Yes, thank you, because brought back a lot of memories as a kid sitting on a school bus watching the headline that Robert Kennedy got shot. And Paul Friedberger was our landscape architecture department, which is, and then having worked for Paze Office, so.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, this really, these, this small little playground actually has a very interesting history. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony and then we'll come back to you. Jeremy Woodoff?
Jeremy Woodoff for the Victorian Society, New York. The St. Mark's playground is part of a highly important neighborhood physical and social intervention of the mid 1960s. It was planned by two of the most important designers of the time, I am pay and M. Paul Friedberg, working with the Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation. Parks' ill-conceived reconstruction of the playground in 2001, damaged but did not destroy it. This reconstruction should not be used as an excuse not to take a more restorative approach. The playground can and should be restored to its original design, complementing the historic design of the super block in which it exists. The importance of Paze and Friedberg's work is increasingly recognized with sympathetic restorations. The Crown Heights neighborhood deserves no less. Parks' proposal shows a variety of standard pavements and furnishings, resulting in a hodgepodge of styles and materials within the remaining bones of the Friedberg design. That design was a brutalist landscape very much of its time. Sharply geometric, mostly rectilinear, with contrasting regular geometric circles, exposed concrete tempered by warm brown pavers, simple lollipop pedestrian scale lights, seating incorporated fully into the design, and a fountain centerpiece that was a harmony of circles within a square. The parks department today creates many intricate water play features in its playgrounds. A take on the original fountain could serve this function. Concrete features should be left exposed, not repainted. Seating should replicate the original ottomans. Additional seating can be provided by bracketing wood slats off existing concrete walls. The proposed 1964 World's Fair benches reflect the atomic Jetsons aesthetic of the fair, not the brutalist aesthetic of this playground. The lollipop lights are simple pipes with round globes, cheap to make and easy to maintain. Parks uses asphalt block pavers throughout its parks. The existing warm pavers seen throughout the super block and contrasting with the white concrete can be replicated with, as in asphalt blocks and not replaced with gray scored concrete. Fences were not original to this playground. Their use should be minimized and they should have a less opaque design than steel pickets. Simple posts and rails infilled with mesh would be better. We also think that removing the two original and seemingly healthy mature trees in the central area would be a serious mistake. They provide what little shade is available. Our written testimony goes into more detail about some of the alternatives we would recommend. The St. Mark's playground is important as a work of modernist design. It exists within a neighborhood reconstruction effort that was a culmination of the social and political forces at work in the 1960s. Its reconstruction should reflect this importance by adhering to its historic design aesthetic. Modifications such as those described in our testimony should be made to the design before the commission acts. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gottgen.
Can you hear me? Okay, okay. Hello, Commissioners. I'm Michael Gottgen, I'm a landscape architect. And in the 90s, I spearheaded, I used to work for Central Park Conservancy. And basically, the playground reconstructions, the brutalist playgrounds there were my projects. So I'm very familiar with reviving, restoring, renovating brutalist concrete playgrounds from the mid 1960s. And about this particular project, the actual play equipment that I believe was more Friedberg's territory than the larger play area and sidewalks, I would like to commend. I think parks, they didn't really emphasize it, but they did a very interesting and nice job with the play equipment. But the rest of the project, I agree with Jeremy Woodoff. And I've also been in touch with Paze Office that it really does, I think, a disservice to Paze's original design. I want to emphasize Paze because Paze came up with the details of the project. Friedberg was brought in to add the play elements with the Astor Foundation. And in this, I brought this book, weighs a ton, just came out a couple of months ago. You can see the project here and discussed in great length. There's an essay later on in the book by the scholar Eric Mumford at Yale about it. It was actually, you could say it was a response to the riots, but basically this playground came out of a desire to continue and foster black ownership of homes in the area in the wake of the disaster that happened in Society Hill, Philadelphia, if you're familiar with that, where I am pay designed a tower, a community gathering space, similar to this gathering space. But it displaced hundreds and hundreds of black families that had lived there for generations. It was well-publicized. And this, he worked on this pro bono in a way largely to make up for the ills that happened at Society Hill. It was almost like a society hill of the people. And that's something that's discussed by Robert Kennedy's team and the Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration Company. So that's sort of the larger picture and it's considered a monument of civil rights. On the detail level, I just want to again emphasize art brute, you know, where the term brutalism comes from, is French, it means raw. The concrete should be raw and unpainted, there should be real wood. I don't think Paul mentioned, they're planning to use RPL, that beige plastic, not real wood here. The brick, all these details, again, coming from Society Hill, beautiful brutalist details. So the materiality on the, on the small scale is very important. And then the larger scale, the story of this playground super block and why it is so important to the history of planning and landscape and civil rights. So that's basically what I wanted to say. And Commissioner Chen asked about the history of it. As you can see, they're slightly differing stories, but I'd like to defer to people like Eric Mumford, he's a scholar at Yale, and to Sandy Pei, who's I am pay's son, who couldn't be here today. But he still works at the, it's his firm, his family's firm, it's still in business, it's Pay Partners now. All right, so that's basically what I had to say. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. And I'll note that there is no one else in the room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us, I assume, who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District Council. HGC appreciates that this new design addresses and incorporates many community suggestions in the renovation. We only wish that Parks was able to find more of a balance between updating this playground for the future and restoring the design elements of the original playground, which was deemed a success upon completion. Thank you.
Thank you, seeing no other online participants. I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Eight recommends approval contingent upon the agency attempting to add more tables if space allows and maintaining existing center compass feature or installing something similar.
Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Yes, really, we're very sensitive to the simplicity of this design and the original design, but we also do have to consider modern day use and needs and requirements. While I may have liked to have just put in ottomans, that is not really an ADA compliant way of seating. So we did, the community was very, very specific about being inclusive of everyone and having comfortable seating arrangements throughout the space. And then as far as the walls, we have the existing walls. Sustainable practices are very important to us. The walls are in fine condition. If we were to strip the paint, we would not be able to achieve a plain concrete appearance. So we would have to paint the walls. And the truth is, is that our parks get tagged all the time, so they would inevitably be painted. So we do use this color in order to address that and unify the space.
Commissioners, any questions, final questions? All right, then I think we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Mann, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we're going to begin our discussion now on this. And I think we have very interesting history about this site and both from the applicant and the public and an understanding of the existing, the historic conditions, the existing conditions and the proposed and the sort of blending of that. We also should note that while the commission does not regulate sidewalks in this historic district, this block and the other block that was mentioned are both identified in the designation report. And so these two blocks we will regulate, they are different. The other one doesn't have the playground and is a through street. And actually, I think, has some more original paving, sidewalk paving than this block has currently. But it is, I think, something to think about that there are, you know, that there are similar streets. And I think as we think through the appropriateness and the approach of appropriateness here, we want to think about how that might extend to the streets as well as to the private owners sidewalks within this same block. So we'll begin our discussion now. Commissioner Chu, would you start this one?
Sure. I do want to commend this presentation too, because I think it's very thorough, complete, and it does properly show us what the historic condition of the park was and the history of the changes, as well as the many goals that were, are, have gone into this, this proposal of satisfying many desires and requirements, as well as understanding the challenges of existing systems under the streets and all the coordination that needs to go into this. I think that overall, I support many of the ideas and moves that are happening here. I do support the recalling of the original design. Overall, in terms of composition and layout, I do think that what was nice about the original design was the fact that it provided what seemed to me to be an unencumbered access to this space from all sides. And I think that the materiality and tonality of the materials were a grand part of that. The simplicity of singular tonality really made it feel, in the original, the design, that the landscape in fact was sculpted to accept people and gathering of people. Without any visual distraction of different expressions of elements within them, they were sculptural, but they all felt in keeping with the paving. The thing that does strike me is in terms of what happened to that was this coloration of the walls, which just seemed visually very jarring. And the desire to return back to that simplicity is, I think, in some of the current proposal. I do agree that I wish it was there more. And that might be, you know, somehow trying to make sure that the walls and the paving are more uniform in terms of their tonality, I think, to me would make a difference. In terms of the overall design, I did appreciate the original design's whimsical nature, I'll call it, in playing some curves into it, which I do feel that the current design does do one thing, which is provides a variety of gathering space scales, which I think is important. But I do think that the rigidity of all pure rectilinear takes away some of the playfulness that the original design had in its asymmetry. And I would love to see some of that come back, giving it some character that is still subdued because of the simplicity of material cohesion. So I think that my comments are really related to maybe the planning, slight adjustments to planning I could see happening here. And also in overall, trying to keep the elements cohesive and uniform as opposed to appearing to be a scattering of different things thrown into the central space. I'm not saying that that is what your proposal appears to me, that I just would love to see it move a little more towards simplicity and not take attention away by different colors and tones. I also appreciate the practicality of the approach of the paving and I totally understand trying to prevent a future that is even more motley arrangement of finishes. And so I do support that. I just think that maybe a little bit more exploration in simplicity, simplicity of uniformity of color, I think. Comment I made about the railings, I totally respect and understand the need for the safety there. Again, there, if that, if the metal elements could not be so evident and be subdued more in favor of the sculptural quality of the masonry pieces that simply define these gathering spaces.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wilder.
Yeah, I also want to commend you guys on the presentation and the thoughtfulness of the design. I think there were definitely a lot of challenges. One, in trying to embrace history and also dealing with reality of current day, how it's used during the day versus during the night, the vehicular access. One of the things I think that was mentioned, also appreciate all of the comments regarding the history, just understanding more about the area and the climate during the time that it was designed. I think one of the things that was mentioned that I did appreciate was the trees on the interior of the courtyard, just adding some sort of shading in there, as well as defining the space, changing the space a little bit. I did appreciate the original design with, with the curves. I think, I think it, it made it not so uniform, I guess. I also, I know we're talking about the finished colors, which you have a lot of the existing images in there of the blue, which is almost like anything away from that is acceptable. So I didn't put too much, I don't have too much an issue with, with that since you're kind of changing from what it is. And also, I think the nature of the different heights of the surrounding area to the inside does create a little bit of a challenge in terms of seating areas around the perimeter. And again, the intentional use versus how people will actually use it and safety. And so I can, I can understand all the decisions that were made there. So I think overall, I think, I think it is appropriate. There's obviously changes that can be made, but I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann.
Thank you for the detailed, careful and thorough presentation. My, my reactions are somewhat mixed. I appreciate that there are many constraints and constituents that you are solving for. You know, not least of which is, you know, a present understanding of safe play as a parent of a 10 year old. I also appreciate there are many competing objectives. You know, not, not least of which I'm, I'm sure is the budget, which you mentioned only at the very beginning. I do appreciate the gestures, you know, made, illustrated in this particular image to recapture some of the gestural intent of the Friedberg plan with regard to the extent of the walls and the greater uniformity of materiality. However, I think that could perhaps go further in these comments. However, I think that could perhaps go further. And these comments echo, this comment echoes Commissioner Chu's comment that perhaps it has become too rigid, too enclosed, and, you know, lacking those one or two elements that break the rules of the system, right? The, that become the focal points, those curves, or, you know, that one open location. So those are my comments with regards to the planning. With regards to the elements, I appreciate the greater uniformity, even if it's, you know, the Landmark's gray paving that is brought. I can appreciate the need to, to paint the walls and to reuse them to the greatest extent possible, but to paint them something that is compatible with the gray concrete paving. I think that the, you know, the furniture, and I use that word, you know, both literally and, you know, figuratively, the elements, right, that are scattered throughout, perhaps could be reconsidered a bit more carefully. The ottomans seem to be a significant element of the original composition. You mentioned them quite a few times in your original condition yourself. And I was wondering if they could be a model for inclusive seating, you know, utilizing this concrete plinth, you know, with the wood, you know, kind of lining, you know, could be a way to, you know, create seating with backs, to create, you know, social seating, to create seating. A variety of types of seating. That comment is a bit in reaction to the selection of the, the World's Fair benches, which seem quite discordant with the intent of the, the design. And then one final comment, I would echo Commissioner Chu's comment with regards to the railings. Totally understood the, for them, perhaps they could be the color that is more harmonious with the gray palette. Well, thanks again.
You, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I, I think the comments from the Commissioners that touch on, and also the, the testimony, I think, you know, this is very much about a moment in time where we are as a society, speaking of the word safe play. As some of you know, I'm very concerned about this behavior lately of people ramming vehicles, going down, this type of thing. So I think if there's one positive about this thing is that you're paying attention to a well thought out. I think this is an improvement over the, the design that was current, that's currently existing. And I think in that safeguard, this is a, and I, I think the, you know, I talk about brutalism, whether Lou Kahn or whether is, you know, McKenna for the Boston City Hall, it was a different era in time, but obviously, the simplicity of it, the, exposing the nature, natural material, those are something that, you know, I wish we don't have taggings, we don't have graffiti, we don't have. But I think overall, the, the design, you kept the, you know, you simplify over the, the existing design. I can appreciate that. Obviously, Commissioner Mann and Commissioner Chu's comment and Wilder's comments are correct in that, you know, there's something that always, given the, the budget constraint, the layout, and the, too bad your slide on the consensus building, the priorities was a little bit too short for me to understand what the community input were. But I think overall, I can accept it, and I think it's appropriate. But obviously, the devil's in the details, and I wish you good luck on those.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
Thanks. Really interesting conversation about, and, and a, a part of our history that we don't talk about a whole lot. I just read this book a while ago, very interesting about exactly these parks called The Invention of Public Space. I don't know if anybody's read it, very interesting about the Lindsay-era Friedberg parks and their social intent, their, they, you know, the response to the times, the response to the neighborhoods, and how incredibly popular they were. And as far as I know, remain to, to this day. So I, I think that the focus by the Parks Department on Friedberg, as expressed in the presentation, is, is appropriate and is great. And to, to that end, I think my thoughts on, 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 on the proposal relate to how the project honors the Pay-Friedberg design. I think that the planning or the, the plan work is generally okay, but I think that in line with what others have said, where, where the Parks Department is building new, new areas, the northeast corner and the middle south wall, there's no real practical reason why the curves could not be reintroduced in those places, especially the central south wall. It's virtually the same in, in orientation and layout. The ability to recreate that one spot seems like a no-brainer. Why not do it? It's, there doesn't seem to be a programmatic reason. And perhaps something could be done in the northeast corner as well. That would not impinge on the program, perhaps, maybe not as specific as the little apps that, that's there, but something that would recall the, the Pay design, I think would be a really valuable addition. And that would give the, the park a distinction that the current walls lack at, at minimal cost. In terms of the railings, I think, I think Stephen's completely right. And I, I understand the, the desire to keep people from hanging out on, on the walls, and that's important to the neighbors. One thing that they could do, everyone knows they're going to hang out in the park, there's benches there. So if the, if the railings were moved from the center of the wall to the edge or to be offset from the wall on the outside, then the walls would regain their seating capacity from the inside of the park, where we're giving it to them anyway. So you could preserve the function of the walls by just offsetting the, the location of those low metal railings. And to the extent that they are, I mean, I'm not perfectly sure about the code, but I think that, given the height of the drop, it might be possible to, to lighten up the density of the pickets, which would promote visibility. That has to be explored. Obviously, code compliance has to come first. In terms of the sidewalk material, I agree that the, that the Landmark gray scored, small scoring of the, of the general sidewalks is an appropriate compromise and is reasonable. But I think that for the inside of the park, the, 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 the ground should be brown. Brown is the color of brutalist New York in large measure, you know. And, and it also happens to be the color of a lot of the brownstones around, around the, the site. So I think that the brown is a important color to be recalled. And ideally, that would be with pavers. I don't think the DOT would have a problem with pavers in an area that they don't get driven on, like the park. So ideally, a brown paver of the original size would be the way to go. But if that proves to be impractical for any reason, then simply a brown tinted concrete that was scored as they're planning to score it anyway, would, I think, be sufficient to recall the brown color. I think that the, the painted concrete in the, in the tannish gray color is, is appropriate. Unfortunately, exposed concrete just doesn't last in, in your urban setting without incredibly intense maintenance.
Okay. Vice Chair Masters.
Yeah, when I was reading through this project, I was thinking that I really missed Diana Chapin, who, it would have been nice to hear, hear her thoughts. I think overall, the Parks Department has done a very thoughtful job here, and they have returned to a lot of elements of the original design. And I, I think they did a good job in terms of listening to their constituents. And I'm sure they have a lot of other concerns, such as safety. I think that the paving that they're replacing makes a lot of sense. I thought Commissioner Goldblum's idea of the brown in the playground was very interesting. In terms of the concrete wall, I understand that they need the metal railing, the fence for safety reasons. And I, I think that they probably are trying to be uniform with the, the, probably the railings that they're using in other parks. So I was okay with that. And I think they are removing some trees, but I think they're replacing it. And overall, it looks to me like they're increasing the number of plantings, which is also a good thing. So I can find it appropriate. Although I do think that there were some very interesting suggestions that perhaps they could think about from other Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Kwembe.
First of all, I'm always a fan of communal spaces. I appreciate the Parks Department's attention to detail. And then also just having to work with so many different factors and trying to come to a, a compromise and, and an overall approach to the space itself. And I, I believe they were successful. I guess the only thing I would say is that just the, the overall plan, as was stated before, the introduction of potential curvilinear elements to be reminiscent of the, of the original park. And in doing so, it helped creates more planned spaces within the space. And I think that's one thing that this plan could use to allow it to have some flexibility, but then also just to give it a more enjoyable experience overall.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for your comments. And I also want to thank the Parks Department for their very thoughtful and thoughtfully presented design and the public for their comments, which also helped, I think, inform our discussion today. And we're just regrouping with the applicants for the moment. Okay. So I, I think there is a lot of support for the project here and, and the very important goals that you have laid out, even where there are some challenges to navigate some of the constraints of the site and the issues. So I think we, we certainly support the plan overall, conceptually, and most aspects of it. But I think that we've heard some comments about slight adjustments to the plan to reintroduce some of the sort of whimsy and the curve, curvular moments and curvilinear moments, and also some adjustments to the tonality and the materiality to help even push further the uniformity of the design. There've been other suggestions about the interior paving color. So I think we will ask you to think about slight adjustments to the plan and the overall material and tonality scheme and the, the density and, of the railings. And we'll have you back as soon as you're ready. But overall, I think we, you know, look forward to seeing you back as soon as you can. All right, thank you. And we'll now move, okay, sorry. And it is now time for lunch, so we are going to break. It is 12:35. We'll return at 1:05 and resume the afternoon session. We'll ask all members of the public who are currently on the Zoom and who wish to rejoin after the break to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time, so that you don't experience any technical difficulties that might arise if you try to rejoin if, after we've removed you. And we'll ask all members of the public to exit the hearing room at this time. And we'll see everybody at 1:05. Thank you.